Okay, okay. Okay, perfect, cool. Alright, hi everyone. So um today we're gonna do um uh a bit of a kinda coded session um again on um the this website DeepML. Um they done a few updates, right? And now they can have like a uh there's a bunch of new feature if you're uh struggling, let's say split problem into smaller problem. You have a notebook mode now. Um it's pretty cool like the level of engineering that the these guy had. So I'm gonna be exploring about these features. Um but uh mainly looking at linear algebra problems. So if you remember how this thing work uh I'm over here. There's a whole bunch of problems that you can choose that are related to deep learning, machine learning. And uh right now I'm trying to get through all of the linear algebra ones. I don't know if you I'm gonna go through the bulk uh now. Um I'll try to do a bit like uh five of them and like always I'm gonna be drawing over here like uh whatever the heck I think the solution is. Um yep, so you can tag long if you want to. And I don't hesitate to ask any question uh related to machine learning, deep learning or um anything really. Um and here to help. So let's get going. Um so the first one I wanna do is define transformation for polynomial feature. So let's take it, look at it. So uh the statement is write a Python function to perform a phi transformation that map input feature into a higher dimensional space by generating polynomial features. Just transformation allow model like linear regression to fit on the data by introducing new feature dimension that represent polynomial combination of the original feature. Okay. Numerical data, so what's my what's my input here? List of numerical data and then a degree as input and return a list where each inner list represent the transform feature of a data point. If the degree is less than zero Okay, so this is our my early step. Okay, that's cool. Okay. So let's uh take a look at it. Okay. Um hey, I'd like to um I like to draw and stuff. Yeah, like I said, um uh usually I um I prefer to do all of my um let's say all of my uh coding uh by hand uh before well actually no, all of my programming by hand uh before um just so that I can map properly what's going on. Uh so here my data list data is uh my list of numerical value to transform. Uh so this is a vector, it's not a matrix. So this is a vector, right? And these thing this degree is the phi transformation. Um So it maps the input feature into a higher dimensional space by generating polynomial flow. So just like put it to a different degree. Transformation allow model like linear regression to fit nonlinear data. Okay, yeah. The this I I knew about that, but like seems pretty easy. Uh and then I return what another list. So I think here it's a a vector uh to the degree, I guess. Here. Hi, Standic. No worries. Don't hesitate if you have question. Hey, by the way, I have um um I'm doing a uh a big review of this paper. Took me a while. Um it's this one. Um highly recommended. Um the I got reached out by the folks at MiniMax. Uh they showed me their stuff. Uh but that one is a very, very interesting paper. Um almost done. It's sixty eight pages long. Um so I'm I'm almost done with the the thing. But they they in their case it's a fully open source like open weight a model. And they showed the whole thing like the all of the recipe that they have for like the pre-training, the post-training. Um and what's cool with this model is that it's a it's not a a classical model with just a softmax. It has a linear attention mechanism in it. And it was able to like reach some pretty good um uh accuracy, like if you look here uh in the benchmarks. Um so like this is against all of these other model which use softmax. But this one like uh uh use mainly linear attention. Um so yeah, anyway. I was working on this uh a few uh a few nights uh this week, but it's coming. I'm almost done with it. Okay, so where was I? The phi uh transformation. I'll just get some definition if I can. Is it? Uh okay, no, I don't wanna do. I don't even think like I I don't even think it's that much. Wait. Have been put to hide the initial space. I think it's uh way easier than I think. Likely regression to fit nonlinear data by introducing yeah, yeah, I know that. Textures to increase the expressive power. Okay. So for input value x, the phi transpish transformation expanded as uh okay, yeah. So if I have only one x, I get all that. Okay, it's a list of list. That's a matrix. Okay, shit. Yeah. So I was wrong here. This is not a vector. It's actually a matrix. Oh, that's a matrix. And I think it goes up to the degree. Where these are specified degree. Yeah, okay, cool. So it goes it will go one x blah blah blah. And this one is zero, right? Okay. So it go from zero to the degree. So okay, so if I have my uh degree, it will create for each of my um this let's say this is my vector. Um all the data. I'm gonna put it like this. Let's say this is the data. Right? Let's say I have three uh uh element in there. Then the degree will go from um it will actually go from zero to the degree. Right? They go from zero toot 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 until degree. And what it does is it will just take all of this and iterate like that and go like this. It will go let's say this is uh x one, x two and x three. That will have a number of degree. So let's assume let's say this thing is a assume this thing is tree, right? It will go x one zero and then same thing here, same thing here. And x one one and x one two, x one uh three. And here we have four, um if I understand properly. Uh yeah, we have to have for if x is equal three and the phi transformation uh transformation is that uh this is for one x, but we have a matrix at the end. We have to have a matrix at the end. And okay, cool. I think I got it. Perfect. It's not that complicated. It's two for basically, right? Um we can get that done pretty easily. Is there anything else? If the degree is less than zero, the function should return empty list. Okay, I have a early stopping thing. I'm gonna code that first. So here uh I will just put my uh uh my guards here. So if degree uh is uh smaller than zero, then return um what do you want it to return? Uh an empty list. Okay, I'll just return that. Okay, so the guard is done. The function should take analytical uh data and degree as input. Okay, cool. So what I would do here, I would um I already know how big this thing should be. I already know um I could I could create the matrix first. I'll take I'll I'll just uh uh I'll just like construct it as is. So I will have the phi matrix here and then I will append it all the time. So for um let's say i in range zero well zero two uh degree plus one, right? We're gonna do that. And then we're gonna iterate here. And I'm gonna do a phi uh vector here. And I'm just gonna like append to it. Um none of this is uh really um sorry, are you can we see properly? Uh yes, okay. None of this is uh really optimized in any sort of way because we will not be working at list here. We'll be using NumPy. So I'll just take a crack at it with the with the list first. Um so we iterate over there and then I will just need to iterate over the data in um put it to that degree. Um Yeah, I think that's that's kinda that. Like there's nothing there's nothing to create here. So for um uh x in data and I will do data and uh power here. NumPy power. Do 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 can just do np dot pow. Yeah, okay. Power and then I put my x in there and I put my power in there. And that's that. So uh I'm gonna return that number. And it's gonna be in zero uh will uh x i equal that. I'm gonna add it to the phi vector. And that's that. I think I'm good. And at this point I just add it to the phi matrix. And phi vector. And that's the thing that I'm gonna return it in. Return phi matrix. Um it's gonna go zero, add it there. And then go one, add it there. I think that's that. I don't think there's anything more. Still a few bug into that thing. Okay, wait. Uh this good. This one good. Okay. And then I have np float. They want an actual number. So um uh np float to float. Um How the heck? Uh Cool. I think I'll I could just do that. Float. This is still messy because I don't need that much for loops here. I can just uh run it directly with the an NumPy um NumPy array should be good. So what do I have? I have expected that. Expected tree here. And okay, and I got what? I got two, two and two. What's up? I have two elements. And then it's like uh wait, am I Ah, okay, here. Okay, I messed up. This one goes above. Yeah. This one goes here and this one goes down. So anyway, it's just dumb. Yeah, that's perfect. It's like that. So I'll go um x in data and then I iterate over that x and that x. Yeah, that x is the one because if you look here, that x is the one that I'm dragging on like this. That's perfect. And then I'm adding to the the phi vector and then I gonna add it here. The x stays the same, the i change. Okay, should be good. Yeah, I could uh I could try it out. I didn't I didn't uh I didn't test it uh yet, no. Um Thanks for uh the uh recommendation. Okay, I got it. Perfect. That's good. So this is good and all, but um it's fairly disgusting in term of um um optimization. You could technically do it all with an NumPy array. I could uh generate um uh the degree here. And I think wait uh yeah, I could go through each element instead of trying to do um all that here. Um I'll note it down, but for now I think that's uh that's good enough. So that's a green. So got it first try. And got it second try. There uh might be a better um usage of wait uh using for loops for performance purposes. Alright, cool. So that one was easy. Not too hard. Um I really like these explanation honestly like um uh it's pretty cool. It's pretty cool that like you have direct example. I always look at them in our before doing my uh implementation. Okay. By the way, if you guys want to try it out, um it's uh the eighty eighty four uh problem here. So let's take out uh which one do I have next? I have uh this one is good. I have a dot product calculator to make. Okay, so write a Python function to calculate the dot product of two vector. The function should take two id uh two one id two vector no two NumPy vector as input and return the dot product as a single number. Okay, so this is also an easy one. And the function calculate dot product by multiplying corresponding element to two vector, for example, dot dot dot. Okay, cool. And uh yeah, this one is pretty straightforward. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. I'll go through the whole process anyway, but uh okay. Uh this one's done. Actually gonna try the notebook mode. Uh I'm based in um Montreal uh uh near um in Canada, actually. Where are you based, I'm at? So the formula for that is just this. The summation. So that's really easy. So basically we have gonna have our two uh vectors here. So v one and v two. And effectively they need to match. We're gonna assume they're they're matching here. Uh we're gonna multiply these two together. So um here we have num um I don't I don't wanna just use uh I don't know, just use NumPy straight up. That would be too um too easy. Hmm. Yeah, I could I could calculate that instead. Because otherwise like it's just a dot product function. DeepML and Cim perfect for recovering math and improving coding. Paris. Oh, cool. Yeah, it's a cool website, honestly. Like um I really like it. And I like also that like um you can uh propose like a prob uh not problem, sorry. Um you could propose a problem if you want to. Like uh if you if you like uh want to to set up uh uh you have an idea for a problem, you can uh publish it. So this is this is cool. Um and like it's fairly comprehensive. Like there's a lot of problems so far. Um there's in machine learning, there's like deep learning. And some of them are kinda quite hard. Like uh some of the hard ones uh took me uh took me a few days uh not a few days, but a few hours to uh to get through. Um yeah, I highly like um that um that website. Okay, so um I I could do I could just there's three way of going about this. I could do it dumb and don't don't make use of the NumPy uh NumPy thing. So like first thing I could do is just like uh so just go ahead and draw here and then literally um iterate on both, right? So that would be one way of going about it. So basically I have like a here, I have my b here. I take each of the index and I go a times b and then I go to next one. So let's say this is c and then this is d. I'll do a plus and I do c times d. That will be one way. Um yeah, the second way I could go about this is just use NumPy dot product. Um yeah, that product. Which um is fairly it's ju I think it just add you just do add and you're you 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 get it. Or like like just literally do np and then you have the dot and then you have uh this vector v one and v two. Um I could do that, but I feel like it's like not the not the intended exercise. Um And the third way I could do it um with me. See, I'm at email. Um the third way of going about it would be this one, this formulation. Uh yeah, so here I could take the norm um the oh sorry, the magnitude of the vector. Um and then the angle between the two. But I don't have the angle. Yeah, I could do yeah, could maybe do that. So that would be one other way. So this but I feel like this is like going in circle a bit uh in this particular setup because I will have to calculate the magnitude, right? So magnitude here, which not it's not uh it's not too hard. Uh again, another another one. But then like this angle, um I'll need to calculate the angle between the two. Um which I find absolutely pointless. Uh so like this, I think it's a no-go. Uh this I think it's like a bit stupid because I don't have the angle. I will need to find it first, right? So I think they want me to do that. I'll do it like this. Um it's a bit dumb, but uh I'll iterate uh over the vectors. Okay, so um if I have the notebook mode, but uh like can I access? I don't think I can access the the variables. So I'll just have to play around with okay. So let's say I have this. So one, two, three, four. Uh let's let's use the same thing as them. And here right, b is four, five, six. Four, five, six. Okay, and uh oh is this working? Okay, it's working well. Nice. Um good. Uh so I have these two and then uh the algorithm will be like uh dot product. Uh I'll just call it dot and then I'll have like a b and then it will be like um um I will zip them together. So a i b i in um take a zip iterate over to list. Dupa, duba, duba. Yeah, I just need to zip them. Zip a and b. And then I go a i times b i. So we're going really uh um uh dot product. We're going like uh minimalist here. Um uh almost using uh nothing. Equal dot product plus this. Voila. And then we can return that again. Product. Ooh, this is this is some fine uh uh this is some fine programming that we're doing here. Let's say dot a b. Yeah, what's this? What's the result of this thing? It's thirty two, right? Yeah, it's thirty two. Cool. Okay. So that's the solution. Um I can take that and jam it over here. Um okay, I don't need to do that. And then I can just go and replace this by vec one and vec two. This is as inefficient as it gets. There's I think there's no way in making this um a more crappy uh piece of code. So uh I think that will work. Okay, now. What did I do? Uh return dot product. So uh dot product equals zero, indentation and then it doesn't match. No, okay. Maybe it's that. Let's try again. Line twelve, what's up? What's the issue? Is this the issue? What's up? Indent and edited does not match any other indentation level. Does I have the same thing everywhere? Yeah. Two. Okay, this is a tab. Oh, maybe it's my um that's odd. Yeah, it's a bit odd. Okay, let's see. Am I just dumb here? What's up? Um Yeah, definitely. But I think like there's uh some issues with um the indentation. Like this one is uh a proper indent, but what I'm doing here is like four dots. So I kinda have to move them manually, I guess. Uh good, let's see. Yeah, that was weird. I had to um I don't know if it's my it's my tab that is a bit messed up, but like when I uh do the tab, I don't get the arrows, right? You see here, there's an arrow. And uh when I I had to copy paste that arrow in there in order to make it work. Let me see. Uh here. Uh maybe my my keyboard is messed up a bit. I don't know. So uh this is zero, zero. This is twenty one. Yeah, that's pretty that's pretty basic, simple. Um dot product calculation of vector is uh fairly straightforward. So that was a green. And uh very simple and easy. Would have been uh a bit more challenging to calculate uh by finding first angle between uh the two vectors. Cool. cool um we're done with this one so that's uh good okay now we're here for uh implement like which one is it orthogonal projection cool yeah but keep it up guys like uh I I really like your stuff um I really like what you you guys are doing um I I always found that there was kind of a missing um there was kind of a missing bit in a in a like a uh like the machine learning uh uh or deep learning um uh curriculum or some so like uh the programming folks like soft software engineer like they can go into like um they can go over there like on scrimba and then they they have like all of this stuff right they have like all of these courses that you can type and then like it gets like directly uh 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 how to say like uh there's a back and forth directly between like y your your code and like the solution right they you can go lead code or accurate and all this but I I found that like for um for machine learning there was really nothing like you you either you either were doing project or you were doing like uh theory and the gap between the two is like super big like i in my view there's kinda missing step where it's bite-sized um kind of a kind of buite bite-sized uh problems mini problem just to know if like you're you you know your stuff and then like just to get the hang of um let's say I don't know using scikit-learn or like okay now like here we already made all of the work now let implement let's say I don't know this uh uh this uh 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 gradient descent uh variant right so put it there and then we we can run it you don't have to mess around a notebook setup you don't have to like uh set yourself up uh locally or whatever you just go somewhere and then you can just run code um so I I I feel like this is really like a missing pieces in the in the like the uh the whole machine learning learning environment so keep it up I like it okay so implement orthogonal projection of a vector onto a line uh so compute orthogonal projection of a vector task is to implement a function to calculate orthogonal projection we have vector V and then we have a line another vector so this serves this are two vectors and this projection result on the vector L that is closest to V um yeah no worries keep it up write a function so this is my function um yeah this is a bit redundant how it's written but uh okay the function should output a list representing the projection vector rounded to three decimal spaces okay so we have enough here to uh work on so let's go here so I feel like this is important because otherwise I'm not gonna pass the test so I have to round this um and I have my uh have my vector let's say I have my vector here uh this is V and then I have my other vector L I guess right well this one I'll just I'll just turn it I guess like this and I need to project this one into a line so I'll need to do that stuff right if I remember correctly like this and then I can do that and that's my uh what do I do what do I return? yeah so this is my list um so I'll call it P so this is this is gonna be P this big one gonna be L and so here um all of them should have same dimension because they they all are um on the same kinda world um okay I'll need to have a bit more information uh about the formula a fundamental concept in R G P is a projected project one vector to another cause point two V on the lines can be taken of of V shadow okay yeah in answer vector L in space we calculate the scalar projection of V onto the unit vector of L which represents the magnitude of the projection the resulting projection vector lies along the direction of L yes so character in space okay so I guess that's just that that's nice oh yeah I I I haven't uh this one right um okay let's uh let's see what's up uh correctly the dot product of two vector which is essential of co computing the projection yes and you calculate dot product and after that can I move to the second one directly multiply a vector by a scaler to scale its magnitude properly you scale that and once you have the two I think you you have the two together you're gonna uh put them uh together because the formula is um to that product and then uh wait wait so yeah to that product and then a scaling a factor that we're we're putting there um three uh I don't see the connection between the two I think it's just because we're multiplying this stuff well m maybe I'm just fucking dumb uh wait a second to 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 reducing projection vector lies along the direction of L and L originally the projection of V into the unit vector L the normalized version of L simplified to of course because yeah these kinda uh okay wait which which uh which uh function I'm using here and why does this one has add? okay unit vector L the normal normalized version of it okay cool I don't have the normalized I have just like the normal version of it um okay let's uh let's let's go for this for right like I'll just use this one for now um so the dot product I already done that so that product can I see can we see it okay perfect so this one I already did it so A uh I say V one I V two I in zipped it V one V two and then uh dot product dot product plus V one I times V two I yeah that's this is stuff right return dot product I've already done that okay and uh okay I can test it out this is pretty nice I like I like that feature I like to um this is pretty cool I love it no this is very nice and then here we're just gonna um scalar well uh can I use the same list? uh I'll just create another list so scale V for uh V I in V scaled V dot then V I times uh scalar and then return scaled P I think that's good enough okay I I like that I like that it's uh um it's not giving you the the full uh uh it's not taking you by the hand like throughout the whole thing it shows you like all the small problem that you have to fix up and it's up to you to uh to put I love it this is actually cool I think there's a bug though because it put this one as solved because I I've solved the like the smaller ones but I actually didn't solve yet the uh the big one um but this is really great because a lot of the time um like this is from personal experience because I've taught um uh I was a tutor in se software engineering um for like three years and I was like a a TA in some of the courses um and every time there was like problem set to solve that were a bit ambiguous there there's two kinds of student there's like uh one student that will kinda calm down and try to like find the mini problems and there's there's another kind that will try to like fix the whole thing and the bigger the problem the bigger the tendency for all students to converge toward trying to fix the whole thing and making like a spadi spaghetti mix um like the the in a any problem that I've that I've found like all like um all software engineering data science even research problems like there was always this like big thing that we want to do right and however you're looking at it like it's never one thing like it it never ever ever was one thing there's always like um all this micro problems that are uh in it and sometimes like there's one that has a big shape like this right there's that's big shape and like this is the scary part like you you know you know this one you know this one you know this one you know this one but then you look at this one and like you like you you kinda avoid it right a bit um some of the students have a bigger area like this right some of them like all of these are like uh one blob um but I find that like when a problem is hard is because you have this internally so if you kill these first right um then you don't have this big problem you just have this thing and then you can take it out right you can take that thing out and then start to study it a bit and then like you realise that it's looking like this because you don't have a good mental model about the uh this stuff and actually like it's it's uh it's three problem like this uh that are connected together and then you can just fix them um and then you're you're kinda done uh I have a a good example of this it was um uh which one was it um I think it was this one uh uh it was not this one it was like the transcranial one yeah this one yeah okay it was this study um that I've done can I get the PDF? yeah it was this one uh two 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 yeah so um like uh I think I already discussed this this project uh in a in another um in another thing so we had this big problem right and it was kind of a weird one um with transcranial direct I had this device um that looked somewhat like um it was not exactly like this i it it was a a high uh density E E headset um but like basically what you had is uh I had um people with this stuff on their head right but with the high density E headset and I had to do a whole system that uh could do many things like uh it would uh collect the information here right so it will collect the data and then um it will uh calculate a bunch of feature related to the brain right and then you will uh like uh here this one will store them uh in a in a database that I had on MATLAB um and then at the same time it will allow the uh the participant here to uh get from the feature um like uh 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 make a ball move like this like that thing it was a brain computer interface that type of uh of problem so like uh we had this and like with the brain stimulation that we had over here right um in some of the channel I was supposed to make this thing move when I looked at the problem as a whole I was like I have no clue what to do um like uh it was it was huge because I didn't know this headset I didn't know like how to get data from it it was MATLAB I didn't had access to the documentation I knew I had to save the information because we're gonna analyze it afterward for like the research um and the feature that we had to calculate was the first time I I saw them and then the brain computer interface I didn't know how to make this and I didn't know how to make it move right because I had to connect it to the brain somehow and it has to have like a um iterative kinda loop with it um but when like it looked like a big problem like this but when you when I I was able to kinda break it down into like the small component then it was easy I all I started uh with this thing actually with this game I was trying to make the game and then make it like switch back and forth between green and red and just have the control and once I had the control I could connect it to something right then what I did is I just like uh tried to calculate the feature that I needed right uh from the brain and I didn't try to connect the two together yes yet but like just being able to calculate it efficiently was good enough and after that it was just about like collecting it and then storing it properly so once I had everything to like uh together then I started to make some bridges uh between each of them and uh stuff started to pan out I had just one month to make the whole thing because we had like what I think we had uh uh we had a lot of participant for that um for that stuff uh that was um uh lined up uh but actually just an example of like the powerfulness of uh breaking down smaller problem um the part that had the I had the most difficulty was connecting uh the collection with moving this thing because the two had to happen like s uh at the same time uh and MATLAB was a mess for parallelism um yeah okay so we took a quite a detour um but let's get back into uh this part so we have the vector we have this we can calculate dot product we know how to do that right and then we know how to do that then also um and then this it because it's a vector and a vector it will give us uh two scalar right so we're gonna have a a scalar and then another scalar and then this will give us a like uh our third scalar and then with the scalar we can just multiply by L so we know how to do we know how to do that we know how to do that and that thing uh we saw it uh in a in the thing so let's go and let's go uh with the a dot product so that we already just done uh so between uh V one and V two right so uh just call it that actually dot product equals zero and for uh V uh I V two I in uh zip V one V two then we do that product that product plus V I times V two I and then return that right so this is the first one and then the second one that we need to do is uh a scalar uh mult and then we're gonna take a scalar and then a vector and then we're gonna go uh scalar uh V scaled scaled V and then we're gonna do the stuff that we just saw uh so um I in V so scaled V then I times and then return that scaled V okay I think that's it right so now uh the formula is um uh V V uh dot yeah V times L and then we have L times L and then we have uh V times L divided by L times L this is a scalar and then we have uh V times L divided by L times L that thing which is a scalar multiply by L divided by L times L, that thing which is a scalar, multiply it by L. Okay, that's pretty simple. So we do dot V L. And uh then we do so I'll call it top bottom. Okay, and then here we're gonna call it S, top divided by bottom. And then here it's gonna be uh scaled uh oh how do I call it? Scalar mult of uh S and L. And this is what we're gonna I think that's that. It's not too pretty, but uh let's see how it work. And type and what the heck did I do? Let's print them all out. Top print bottom. I did a return? Yeah, I didn't return this top. Product. Yeah, okay, cool. Okay, almost there. So I printed that, this is good. I printed that, this is good. And I printed that, this is good. Cool. So we can just do that and uh do that. Alright, that's it. So this one is easy, um but it's basically a bunch of um um of operation. You're just like recreating the formula. So nothing too crazy over here. Uh and you can actually change them if you want to. I could have done this actually. I feel like this is a bit more um understandable than the top bottom thing. So I'm just gonna remove it here. Like that. Should still work. Right? And then we have the scalar mult. I think this is good. I think that and that is a is a good setup. Alright, perfect. So that was good. Um this one was uh uh pretty good. I tried to uh the breakdown. Okay, it was actually helpful. Should test it out for the uh harder uh problem. Okay, so then we go into singular value decomposition stuff. Um with Okay, given a two by two matrix, right, the Python function to compute the singular value decomposition, the function should return the matrix U, S and V such that A equal U times S times V. Use the method describe it, dispose uh okay, cool. Okay, maybe go check uh another resource. Uh I'll go over here. So let's read that. Okay, that's an old blog post. So okay. Uh could this videos measure by using other means? Okay wait. Should I calculate this singular value equation uh two by two? Is to start by calculating the eigenvalue of that and that to share the same. Calculate the eigenvalue of a two by two, you need to solve this equation. So yes, the determinant of this, this need to be equal to zero. Uh Yes, matrix subtraction. Yeah, this one. Okay. Leave you with this. This is quadratic. Solve the quadratic formula by substituting one for A. There's a f there's a di di direct formula for that. Okay. There we go. Gonna be a journey here. Um Jesus, okay. Alright. So we have the um U, S and V. Um So I have to get that with the product of the matrix which is transpose and transpose the metric such the matrix share the same eigenvalue. Alright. Find the eigenvalue, to find eigenvalue two by two. Solve the characteristic equation here. Okay, compute the singular value. Yeah, it seems to be a long one. There are so many steps. Um okay, cool. The singular value which form the diagonal element of the matrix X are the square root of the eigenvalue. And then calculate the eigenvector for each eigenvalue, solve the equation, that normalize these eigenvector to form the column of U and V. Remember, I formed the matrix afterward. Combine the singular value and eigenvector, construct matrix U, S and V such that And that makes a lot of sense. But I can use NumPy here, so should not be like too c okay, yeah, okay, nice. Um yeah, I have to be careful. I was like going uh about it with like okay, note do not uh use only list here. Leverage NumPy uh uh Big Ten. Um uh Okay. Um T and okay, so At this step I get it. Okay, I'm gonna calculate it, but um the rest I'm not sure. So wait. Uh if you want to calculate the singular value decomposition of a two by two, one way to do is to start by calculating the eigenvalue of this and that. They share the same eigenvalue. Why? But why should I calculate this then? I don't get it. Uh why does it says and? Okay, wait. U contain the eigenvector of this. V contain the eigenvector of this. But the two, okay, this they're okay. They share the same eigenvalue, but not necessarily the same eigenvector, I guess. Okay, right. Okay, yeah, okay. So we get that. These are also the eigenvalue of this. Find the square root of this value are from the element of the diagonal of the matrix. Okay. We have the eigenvalue of that. We can calculate the eigenvector. Okay, we calculated blah 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 blah. Yes? Uh okay, 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 okay. Okay, I get the first steps, but um okay, let's let's go step by step here. Um I will first need to do the uh uh get the eigenvalues and then after that I can get the eigenvectors. That's usually how it goes. Yeah, okay. So I guess step one, uh calculate the eigenvalues uh of uh uh wait. But we are not, we're not finding the eigenvectors here, wait. Okay. Yeah, I think I'm kinda dumb here. I just need to have a clear understanding of like U, S and V. Wait. Um I think they showed another. Oh no, why? Okay, singular value decomposition uh U, S, V. No, okay. Guess a bus a bunch of transformation here. So this is a big matrix, so we have U, S and V. It's not N S actually. Um And then we multiply this by this by that. We only have the diagonal, okay. That's my issue. Okay, wait, uh maybe confused a bit. And what should we return here? Okay, we we need to return the matrix U, S, V. Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm fucking dumb right now. Uh because the matrix U, S and V are um uh contain the singular value. And the eigenvector form the column of matrix U and V. Okay. Okay, right. Okay. I guess it's just a recipe that we need to follow at this point. So U containing the eigenvectors of that, right? V containing the eigenvector of this and S containing the square root of the eigenvalues that we've like already uh previously mentioned. Okay. So here I guess there is a first step which is to calculate the eigenvalue of um A times A uh T and A. Wait. May have first A T A One first actually. Okay. The two which we have the eigenvalue. Uh Yeah, okay. Then we have compute singular value uh using the square root of the eigenvalue. But So this is S. Okay. And then we get need to calculate the eigenvector. Okay, step three, calculate eigenvector. Sorry guys, if I'm um a bit uh slow on this one. Um yeah, I I like to take my time when I don't understand the stuff. But I think I'm I'm converging towards something, right? We're we're g we're gonna get there. Um when I get get there at some point. So calculate the eigenvector of um for each of the eigenva and it doesn't matter because both are the same. No, it's not the same, like uh no, I have to test it out, I think. Uh I'll need to step through this stuff slowly, okay. To I'll make this no I go into notebook then. Okay, let's start with this. And let's think it through. Okay, we have that which is a two by two, right? Uh well, I can I take the same thing as him? Does he have an example or? Yeah, ten, is it the same? Then eight ten, yeah, it's the same. Perfect, nice, okay. So I have this. And now what I'm gonna try to you know, I'll through actually I'm gonna make an NumPy array. NumPy uh N P array, right, right, now A. So I have my stuff. And um what I want to see is the next step here is that, right? A transpose um pose dot T I guess. Yeah. Alright, and uh this okay. So give me that. So this is my A A. Okay. Uh uh right, okay. So I get that. And then I do this And then I do this for that one. So I'll go A A times P transpose of A. Wait what? Is it normal? I'm getting exactly the same s I think it sh I think it should be because it's a square matrix, it doesn't matter. Um Well does it? Because of that. Six. Hmm 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 hmm. Get the exact same stuff. Which kinda makes sense I think, right? 'Kay uh wait, I'm just confused right now. So can be transpose. Um so I have my array, I get it, I set it up properly and then I do the transpose of that, right? Array. So I get dot array times A which is this. Uh right that's good and it's all good. Should be give me the same stuff because it's um uh it's a square matrix, doesn't matter. Okay cool. So I got that. I have my singular value here. Uh okay. Save the same eigenvalue. Find eigenvalue so solve the characteristic equation and it show how to do it. So I have this A A transposed. So I get uh my stuff. Do I get the same answer here? No. Ten eight ten minus one. Ten eight. No, absolutely not. What's going on? I don't think I'm transposing it properly. Ta 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 ta. Okay wait. One hundred eighty eight A uh Hmm wait okay. 'Kay wait a second. Think I'm just being uh incredibly stupid right now. So let's just transpose that and have my A T. So I have this transpose. This is good. And then uh it. 'Kay I think I'm just being super dumb. A T. My my A. P dot 'Kay. Yeah, I think that's it. Okay, perfect. I was just being an idiot. Good, we found it. There we go, whew! So I was not doing the right stuff. So this is this should be good, perfect. We have the our dot product here. So we're able to do um A A T. Wait, this one is what? Okay, and then my A T A is P dot A T. 'Kay. Let me put this into different lines. So this is that, that and then I want my so that that. Wait. Wait, A V. T A. Perfect, nice. Okay, we're getting there. Fuck smart, we're getting there. And then I just need to calculate uh this. Um wait, so this is my what I'm doing here. Uh those are my three coefficients. What the heck is he doing? Look at this. Is this is it? One hundred sixty four times uh one oh one. So he's doing this times this, minus this times that, minus uh this is the determinant. Why minus that? Minus B C? Ah okay, because of the lambda. Expanding that leave it this. Uh and this is the Z. What is the Z here? Is the result of the determinant like I'm guessing? So he's making a polynomial. Okay right, okay making a polynomial that give us Q. So the formula is getting and trying to find the root of Q here. Uh okay. Okay because this give us three numbers. Why? Hmm. Okay, 'kay this one is a number. Minus two. Ah okay, yeah. Yeah because I don't know Scilab. But this is okay, I was completely flabbergasted by the um uh this formula. So this is not that. So this part is uh which one is doing what? Um this first bit here is when there's a space it means like it's something else. So this is the minus two sixty five, this is a one, this is uh this big number over there. And they're trying to find the root of that. Um because this is that, this is that and this is the last bit. No, I don't get this one. Yeah, I don't get it. This is determinant, this is the formula we're trying to solve here. Lambda, do we know it? Uh no, because that's what we're trying to find. This is the our eigenvalue. And then these ones we know, right? This one is just one. Ah okay yeah yeah, no I'm just dumb. So this one goes first. This is the one over here. This minus X is um A plus D. And then for this is the last thing. A plus D minus B C. Okay cool, I got it. Uh so uh yeah. How do I find nobody? There's a root and I just need to construct my stuff. Oh, there's a word. Uh this is my coefficient. Okay, so here right now we're trying to find the root of uh this formula. Right? The formula look like this. It's uh uh lambda squared plus A plus D minus sorry, minus A plus D A plus D times lambda. Uh is the plus or minus after that? Plus A D minus minus B C. Uh A D minus B C. It's a plus huh? Yeah. 'Kay. Equal zero. So we just need to use uh this work. So we have a bunch of coefficient. In our case we have three. Um do we have? No, we the weeds. Find a coefficient of a polymer of a given sequence of root. Uh here I am over there. Of a given sequence of root. So do we have an example? Line represent is E three plus this square. Okay, because we have three. I think it's the same interface that we have with this. So we just need to get it through here. Let's 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 figure it out uh step by step. So I need poly here. Right? And what is that we gave here? We have these three numbers. Well I'm sorry, that's these three numbers. Like that. And we're supposed to get that number at the end, these two numbers at the end. So these are the answers. Okay, so uh let's figure out the order here. Minus two sixty five and one. And then we give the coefficient. What do we get? Not the right stuff. F uh See that one that we need to remove? Wait. Present zero is zero and zero. Ah no wait, no I'm done. That's the one I need. I need the the root one. This only give the yeah, like I said. It's this one. Okay, so I have my coefficient here. They mean something and I just need to give the okay. So here is that. 'Kay. So I have uh it backward I think. This one should be first I guess. This one should be last. Is that the right? Yeah, perfect, cool. We got it, nice. We're making some headways. Um we're getting there. So we have a way of finding the root and then we just need to find uh these numbers uh effectively. And then how they're doing it right now. This is the f the last one. Yeah, okay perfect. I have the formula. Whoops, sorry. I have the formula for all of this stuff. Um so my uh my X two is always equal to one. And I'm gonna put it here. Right? My X one is equal to my A which is my A at zero zero plus my A at one one. This is negative. Right? Wait, uh I'm doing two hundred plus that. Yeah, and it's negative, perfect. And my X is gonna be X zero. Uh My X zero gonna be A zero zero times A. Uh two okay it's one one minus A F B A. Which one is the B? A B A it's the top one, so row zero one times A one zero. Okay, and I put it here. Do I get the same? No, I did not get the same answer. Jeez. Wait. I one and P eleven minus seventy. That's not what I should have here. What did I mess up? And this one is not right. A zero zero. Ten is that it? Yeah, minus ten. Oh wait, no. It's not this one. I need to ca got it. Fucked it up on on uh on here. Actually gonna make a def um get roots. And I'm gonna give a A. And then in that A, this is what I'm gonna do. There you go, there you go, there you go. Get the Q F and I'm gonna give the roots here and I'm gonna return that, right? So that's what I'm gonna do. There we go. And what I'm gonna uh do here is get the roots of my A uh T A. That's at the end of the day two hundred forty five and twenty. Perfect. And if I want to get the roots of um A A T it's gonna be the same because that's my eigenvalue if I remember correctly. Yes, okay. Whew! We got it. We finally um finally managed to to get it. So just to recap here what we're trying to do, right? First we're trying to get the eigenvalue of like this matrix which is also the eigenvalue of this this other matrix. And based on these matrix we're gonna try to calculate um the uh eigenvector afterward in the step tree, right? So we got the eigenvalues. And now the only thing that we need to do is calculate the eigen uh vectors. Uh but first we can calculate the singular value of that. I think this is what we're doing next. Um Yeah, we they are calculating their eigenvectors. Okay, 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 okay. And where is it calculating the singular value? A sing uh U S. This is a singular value. It's those two squared. Is it what it is? Add the square root of the, okay, so I'll just need to uh to get the square root of that, so this eigen values. We get that, we don't need to calculate both because it's the same shit here. It's the same stuff for both of them. Okay, so we got that. Get the root, so we get the eigenvalues, and then um now I'm gonna try to calculate singular uh values, and for this it's basically just uh constructing my matrix and uh doing the square root, so here uh square root. So N P squared P squared of uh my eigenvalues. Right? I have this and that. Is it the same as these two? So seven uh seven square root of five. Yes, perfect. So this one, okay, so I get my um uh squared eigen values here, and I'm gonna construct my matrix S which is gonna be equal to my squared eigen values zero. And here I'm gonna have a zero. I'm gonna have another one here, it's gonna be my squared, no, this one will be zero, and square eigenvalue at one. And uh I'm gonna have a big hat. Right, this is my S. Two eight and wait. Yes, and then uh yes. Is that it for this one? Two times, yeah, okay cool, nice. So I got the S done. Whoops. So this one is done, this one also is done. Okay. So we only left by uh we only need to calculate the eigen vector now, so that to find this corresponding eigenvector, normalize this vector, eigenvector to form the column U and V. Okay, what are we talking about? Twenty twenty four, okay, blah blah blah, this is also the eigenvalue, blah, and I gotta work it out, find the square root of this value. Yeah, okay, so this doesn't matter, we have these, unlock, we're need to like wait what? Why is it you want you want U two U two? It's the same thing. Is it? Okay, it's a bit weird, no? I isn't supposed to be flipped? Okay, I don't know. So uh now that we have the eigenvalue of this, you can calculate the eigenvector in quick review, and eigenvector is a vector whose direction doesn't change when it's transformed, yes. When a matrix A transforms its eigenvector X, the length of X may change, but the effect of the transformation is nothing more than a scaling of X. So this I know, subtraction give us this, factoring out X give us this, yes. Uh we calculate blah and eigenvalue twenty twenty two forty five. We'll plug that and twenty into the previous equation, so this one, right? Uh yes, okay, you we plug this and then we have uh our numbers, and we're stuck with that twenty, so we get twenty over there. The product result in this equation is that. Because we're just doing the diagonal here. Uh and here this is a diagonal matrix, okay. Uh and then we get these equation, you might be a bit inclined to seek out the new solution, but we're looking for a vector at an end point. Okay, but like wait, I don't wanna do that. I think I can just solve, yeah, like here in this one I don't have to like go crazy. Um I can solve uh the linear equation. Uh straight up eight number. I don't have to do it, because otherwise like I'm just gonna re-implement the algorithm, doesn't make any sense. And then I can normalize. Okay. So I can just use need lin alg solve I guess. So what do I have? Solve linear equation or system linear equation could be the exact solution of X. Okay, so A X plus B, this should be zero I guess. A Yeah, okay, so in that case I just need to But I always I need to do that. No, yeah, I need to do that, okay. I need to create this matrix first, and it's gonna be this one. So it's gonna be um so we need to create the following matrix. So it's gonna be A A T T uh minus what? Minus lambda I s uh lambda uh with the identity matrix. Uh and my lambdas are my uh yeah, so this is just the lambda that I decide to choose. Um in this case it's the twenty. So I take one and I get that, and then if I get that at the end, I get what do I get at the end here? I get one X. Right? Uh and then I get I do that for each one of the one, okay. So I just need to each to each of them. And and once, and this is zero. So basically if I look at which one is it, this one, I'm gonna do lin al solve like this. And uh that's two. I'm gonna go and do something like this, zero, and then um this will be um uh let's say if I hardcode it here, it's uh it's gonna be A A T, well wait, um lambda I equal, and it's gonna be my uh first lambda, let's say here. Gonna be my eigenvalue. Zero, uh lambda zero. Gonna be uh I don't uh right now I'm just gonna I'm just gonna go and uh get the feel of it, I'm gonna make a function and then shove it into uh I shove it into a function so that I can call it uh twice. Um yeah, I'll construct this one manually though, I don't I don't wanna I'm gonna do the same thing as I did before, it's gonna be zero like that, and then here it's gonna be zero lambda zero. This problem is constrained to a two by two. I think they did it on purpose, uh so that I don't go crazy, um but like two by two means that I can hardcode a bunch of stuff. So that's good, and I can do N P dot array, I want to here. So that's that, and I can do, if I want to get uh l uh this whole thing, I do A A T minus lambda I, right? Can I get that? Is it the right stuff? So one hundred sixty four minus twenty. No, I don't think it's the right stuff, wait. Uh wait, no. Uh I'll go with um I think if I do that, yeah, that's the right numbers, right? It's two hundred forty four, yeah. Perfect. So I'll go with zero. Mines are switched, like in their case, the twenty is the last, no, twenty is the first, mine twenty is the is the last. But that's still valid, I get that and I can just go like this and solve that, and it will go ahead and solve it. And I should uh resolv input to print not have enough dimension, a zero, yeah, coordinates nature. Wait what? I may not use that properly. Oh wait, sorry. So this should be zero zero. You know, it doesn't work. Uh wait a second, what's up? Am I just dumb? Just gonna take that away. Uh so wait, this is g good? One two Oh wait wait, wait 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 wait. This is one two, and then this is what? One two three five. So these, the B's is one and two. Right? And then I need to uh yeah, I need to have two of those. My A should be good. I don't I don't see why this is an issue. Uh this should be not too bad. So I have that, and then I have that, what if I do it here? Still gets a nan. Why am I getting nan here? So one hundred forty four uh one oh eight. One oh eight, A one. I'm not sure, I have no idea why I'm getting um a nan over there, um because stack right now. Okay, wait. Well, I don't like why uh why I'm doing um um uh a minus here, um Now that should be good, I don't see why. Am I messing this one up? Wait. Lambda times the identity matrix, and the identity matrix should be looking um like that. But I get the right numbers here. This is a minus, this is a minus, this is a plus. Mm-hmm. X zero plus X one. This one is a one, two, this is on the three, and uh five. Yeah, what the heck? Okay, let's see, if I had anything but that I still get nan. Am I using this thing properly? Let's let's find out. Okay, that thing work. Uh duh 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 duh. What if we had zero here? Okay, we don't get nan here, but like when I do that I do get one, um so uh of the I don't think it's this. No, I don't think it's that. It should fit. That's my B. Okay, wait. First one is one hundred forty four minus one oh eight. Okay, one hundred forty four minus one oh eight, and then the other one is minus one oh eight A one. No, this thing is not uh giving the exact same answer as this Y though. Folks, I have, I'm not sure. Wait, the B array is only treated as shape M colon vector, if it's exactly one dimensional, I would treat it as a stack of M K matrices. I don't know, I don't think it's this. Yo, what is going on man? Why do I get um this seems like relatively tame, I don't I don't understand why I'm not even getting uh I'm getting literally a nan. Oh wait, oh no, wait, I think I'm just being fucking dumb here. Is here three five four five? Oh well, I I don't know, okay, jeez. Uh it's getting late, okay. I don't even need to do any of this, because like this is the formula I need to use, literally here. Like I don't I don't need to new Like I don't I don't need to use anything else. Like this will give me my stuff and I just need to do uh uh okay, so it's gonna be minus this divided by uh the first one and it will normalise. Okay, so uh okay, so A lambda one minus divide by eight lambda zero. And it give me give me straight up my shit. Three fourths, it's exactly that. Wait 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 wait, any multiple Three four f oh wait wait, I think I think this is good. So I get this one, I get this one uh okay. Okay, let's let's jam it into a function now. So def um eigenvector Okay. And I give it what? I give it my um uh my A and then my lambda here, both of them and then I can calculate it here for the first one like that. Lam uh lambda um B wait, sorry. My eigenv values here. I have my lambda zero over there. And then I create my I matrix here. I get my A lambda and then I do this little formula over here. And then I get my first um my first multiple. Wait a second. Okay, wait. Uh here. Minus eighty one divided by this number. Minus one wait. Still seventy five, okay. Okay, so okay, this is my um uh vector zero here and I do the same thing again for the second one. I'll change this, pop 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 pop. I get this other one. And then my eigenvector will be that. This is absolutely disgusting, like this is uh an abomination uh of a function, so I'll note this now. Fix this pile of garbage. Um good. So uh get eigenvectors here if I give my uh which one is it? A A T and my uh eigenv values. What do I get? Okay, I'm gonna get this and that because I need to just take one of them. 'Cause I had two items, this one and this one. Is this is this are these the eigenvectors at the eigenvalue? No huh. This should be four fifth uh Yeah, no, this is not good. Oh wait, to three fourth we got it. But like this one is not the normalized version. Okay, so we have three fourth here. Any multiple of three fourth uh one should satisfy the equation, this will act the vector be in length along the p to the length of is a square root of the following. Okay. Well, let's see, we'll not change. Okay, yeah, I think we'll change something. Uh norm There is for sure a better way to do that than whatever the heck I'm doing right now. Okay, uh yeah, multiply this by two and then okay, and B dot squared here and B dot power here of two and uh plus one, yes. Yeah. Plus one, that's that. What do we get? This one, uh this is is it three fifth? Let's give us five fourth. Well, that's not the right answer. Okay, w uh we do eigenvector of this power two plus was uh plus a square of this squared uh wait, wait wait. Starting to get very messy here. So this is our normalization um Get away, bit bit. Square of that. One twenty five. Why do I get one sixty six here? Let's revert. Oops, zero. Uh what the heck? I get the minus now. No, I think it was messed up. Okay, wait. Ah shit, this one is a good one. Okay, that was good. So if I do uh that part uh over here, which is the square root of that thing, uh I think it was good. So I'm gonna do B dot square of my eigenvector power eigenvector one two plus one. This gonna be my norm uh normalized version of it. From eigenvector one. Okay, we do the same here. Except that it's gonna be this and that will be this and then I'm gonna put this here, this here. Okay, this one is good. This other one, I think it's, am I am I finding this correctly? It's a four fifth. Um no. No wait, uh then we do one divide by that. Okay, right, because the length of forfeit is a square root of the following and then then we divide this by, oh okay. Yeah, we do this divided by that thing and it give us uh I guess three fifth divided by four fifth. Where is the one coming from in this? Because this one is one. Okay, this one is one. Good, okay. I'm making some mental edway now um. So which one of them do I need to do? Okay, no, I have my I have my um I have my scaling factor actually. Okay, we have my scaling factor here and I do that uh that divided by that. Yeah. Vector zero divided by scaling factor. Same thing for the other one. I I start to see uh the end of the tunnel right now, so we're 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 close. I think we're we're really close. So that's the other scaling factor. And uh nope, we're not getting it right because it has to be the same uh because the other one need to be one actually. Yeah, the other one need to be one. Do it by scaling factor. Three fourth. Okay, wait wait wait. Okay, the one this this one is good. The first one is complete garbage. What the fuck? Okay. Is scaling factor good? Scaling factor is this. Is it the same thing? Uh Five fourth. No. Because it has to be this one, yeah. Okay, wait. Okay, so this one is good. This is the actual scaling factor. So what the fuck is going on? What's the I'm a bit lost here, so um in my eigenv values because I'm giving them uh I'm giving them both at the same time and this one is just for one of them, right? This whole journey was for uh just one of them, it was not the two of them at the same time. So I got the first one. Okay, yeah, perfect. So this is why I'm messing it up. So I need to give it one, just one. And in this case, I'm gonna give it the other one. So I give that and I'm because I'm giving it that I'm just gonna give it the lambda zero directly and I don't need to do it twice. Right. And since I'm I'm gonna get the um eigenvale from this, I'm gonna get the lambda zero, there's this and then this is my eigenvector here. Okay, take here, you can stop that. Okay. Okay, so that's right. Right, remember that. Wait, it's flipped, no? One hundred forty four, eighty one, eight uh minus one hundred eight. This is good, but these one are flipped. Why are they flipped? Am I giving the right stuff? A A T? That's good. And then but what is my eigenvalue? Twenty. Is that the thing that we're sending here, twenty? Yes. This minus twenty, okay. A yes. How the heck is this minus twenty giving us that? Two hundred twen what the fuck? Ah. Okay, getting there. Perfect, that's good, that's good. Good. It's good. I get my eigenvectors and if I just print that out, I'm gonna get zero seventy five, zero seventy five, but I just need one. Right, the other one I know it's gonna be one. So my eigenvector is actually gonna be uh the uh multiple is gonna be my multiple and one. So far this is good. Right uh Zero seventy five, one, is that it? So yeah, so zero seventy seventy five is this and one is this, okay? And then I need to square them. So to square them, I need to find a scaling factor, which is my eigenvector at zero here and then this is my eigenvector vector at one here and I can do just to be a complete power F two and then I do that, print And then I do that, print scaling factor. Right, um but this is this good? Uh this is yeah, that's good. Yeah, perfect. I got that, and I can normalise add them both by the same shit, and I get my norms norm eigenvector equal my eigenvector divided by a scaling factor. I'm gonna print that for zero six eight uh is that it? To be five. Yeah, I think it's it. Three five. And then uh four five, right? Okay. I think we got it, so that's the one of them, and then if I go and then do the other one I should get uh minus zero eight, zero six. Minus zero eight, zero six. Yes. We got it. Uh because this is minus four-fifth. Yes, okay. Nice, 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 nice. Okay. Our getting eigenvector um piece of garbage is working well. So this is our uh normalisation of the eigenvector. Uh and here um we are doing X_ one equal X_ two times uh this multiple. Therefore, we are going to get uh multiple one as an eigenvector and normalise. Jeez. For sure there's a better way. For sure there's a better way than like what I'm doing right now. Okay, so this is my first eigenvectors, this is my second one. So where are we right now? We have um this is for the U. So okay, this is for my U. Uh so my U is equal to this, and then that. Right. And uh this U_ one, U_ two. Yeah, this is U_ one, okay. So okay, I'll uh name it better. U_ one equal that and then U_ two equal that. Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do work in a tech job. I'm more uh managing folks right now than uh like uh uh doing this, and I like rarely go that down in a lower level. The main main stuff I'm doing uh at the moment um is more of a AI engineering um with L_ O_ M_s, so we're very far from uh from this stuff. U_ two. Okay, no what the heck? Okay now, okay. Uh it's uh norm eigenvector that we need to return. Uh right, wait. U_ one is what? Okay, this. Okay, why do I have okay, that's good. Yeah, I did uh I did go to university. Actually um my um my background is in neuroscience, um weirdly enough. I was doing research. Actually I can maybe show you. Uh do 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 uh I'll show you a bit what I was up to. Um Yeah, so Yeah, so here uh if you take a look here. I did a bachelor of um of uh computational neuroscience first, and computational neuroscience is like uh it's uh i there's many ways of like analyzing the brain. You can let go like a biology side, you can go into like the uh molecular side, uh like uh the the population biology side. In my cases it was uh mostly um analyzing the the brain in term of um uh uh computation, so anything having to do with taking the information and getting to like a numerical output. So I I did a lot of signal processing uh during that time, and um I uh I uh interned into a lot of labs. So I was doing a psychiatry labs, I did like a molecular biology labs that studied memory. I did also like um um a a lab with uh with really human patients and doing E_ G. And then I did a master and a mash uh uh a P_H_D_ in uh in neuroscience. Um yeah, and right now like uh I founded my own company, so like aft at some point in in this soup um I was doing a bunch of research. I was uh I helped a bit Shopify as a research call. So then and then I I founded my own business and uh it's called Axia, and uh it's basically a a a business in um in supply chain. So kinda did a uh a one eighty here. And I went into a supply chain. I I like tech, and I like like um programming and uh machine learning in general. Um so yeah, we we I co-founded this with a bunch of folks. And uh that's kinda what I I'm doing right now. I'm taking care of like the AI engineering of the platform. I still do some research, um but right now the research that I'm doing is mostly in the um uh actually I can maybe show you. I think I have the uh do I have our more recent paper? I think so. Um the research I'm doing right now is more on the OCR side and on the um wait a second. Yeah, object detection in two D engineering, yeah, this one. So that's that's one of the paper that um uh I'm working on right now with a bunch of folks. Um so object detection in two D engineering drawing for the estimation of carbon footprint. So in a nutshell what we're trying to do is that there is um uh there is information in three D and two D draw drawings that we're trying to extract, and it's useful for us because once we extract all the information, there's a bunch bunch of stuff that is natural language, a bunch of stuff that is like um uh OCR. Once we extract all of this all of the thing, we can use uh that into a bigger pipeline in order to uh calculate um C_O_ two emission uh of like a b a two D drawing with like all of the bomb and the parts that are uh related to it. Um so that's one one of the um um of the uh the example that the project that we're doing, and this is um kinda added to the platform that we're building uh to uh give more functionality to our uh customers. Okay, wait. So now we're there, and then we get that. And this is by use, and I think I got it right here, right? Because wait. Yeah, minus this 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 that. Okay, I think I got it right. I got the U_ right, and I just need to do the uh the V_ and I'm done. And the V_ the same thing. Uh and what what do you do? Uh do you work in a tech job uh yourself? Oh wait, I could get the V_ like this. Well, I could do that, yeah, okay. So what's the what's the thing? Here, I have this, I have that equal to uh my A, and then I could do it's basically this. So the inverse of this times A times S equal this, and inverse times A transpose. Uh yeah, I just need to do this shit and I'm done. Okay, so here um this is for V transpose based on the um S, U, and A. So okay, wait. I can just use in inverse. So with that, boom, I do inverse of S. And then I do the np dot of that uh with U. And then np dot of that A. Is that it? No, that's U, sorry. Yeah, this is inverse. Of U. Uh what is this? Right. Inverse inverse dot dot A, I get my V_. Do we get something that makes any sense? What do they say? They say the V_ is equal to two divided by square root of uh I'll just pull out the calculator. Two divided by the square root of five. What is it? Okay, where did I got? Ooh, I think we got it. Oh no, it's Is it a minus? No, we don't have a minus. Wait. Do I have a mistake somewhere? Oh, in their case this one is the first. Okay. So wait, uh this one I messed up. So this is U_ two, this is U_ one actually. Yeah. No, doesn't matter. Okay, so that's the this. This one is negative. This one is the same in the diagonal. And this one are inverted. Okay, cool. I got my V_T. Make no, you know U_S_ and transpose the V. Right, and what the heck do I need to give back? These three. Okay. Uh I give back the three of them, okay. If I do uh okay. Okay, so I think we got it. I think we we after many uh 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 quite a journey here, I think we got the whole thing. I'm just gonna try to put it all together, so. In a nutshell I need to do uh the transpose of this first, right? Actually this is this is uh giving it to an array. So that's good. So um transform to NumPy array for processing. And then once we have it in processing we do the transpose uh because we need that, and then we uh take the top product here. So we need that and the other one. The other one I we don't use from what I remember. It's not that useful. Um and then we get the roots for getting our eigenvalues, right? We only need to do it once, so this formula is kinda useless. And once we have the eigenvalues we can uh calculate our S, which is that. This is our first milestone. And once we have that, we can calculate uh uh this the eigenvector. Do it like this over here. And we get our game factor here, and this is how we calculate our U. Right. Okay. Uh this is good, and then once we have our U_ we can calculate easily our V transpose. Here. This is our V. That this we can bring to the top like this. Yeah, like that. Okay. I'm gonna take all of this and try to move it here. Okay, I don't need that. We can take this over here. This is already an NumPy array, so I don't care. I'm gonna take the transpose over here. Oh no. Taking the product. Uh these are good. I just need to fix these. Okay, and then this I'm gonna put it here. I'm gonna put that at the top. It's good, yes. And I calculate the single value here. Uh so I'm just formatting everything so I can just chant this over there and check out if like whatever I I've cooked up is absolute garbage or not. Should not be. I think I I got it right. I might have trouble with um uh the padding, right? No, because Py Python is very uh specific about the pad padding sometime, and um um I think I'm not this is not consistent when I I copy paste it. Okay, that's good. And this goes here, I guess. Yeah, I'm testing my uh basic math knowledge here. Always good to go back to basic. Okay, yeah, I think this is good. And then I do it. I do just return my uh S. What's the what's the what's the order? Which one is which? I have to guess? I don't know. I I don't know what they're expecting. That should that kinda be said because I'm returning three thing. Uh okay, I can g I can guess based on that. Um I don't care. I'll 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 just I'll just uh I'll just shoot it out and check what's up. U_S_ and then V_T. So let's see. Of course, of course nothing worked. So forty-seven is ma messed up. Okay, so Of course, of course nothing worked. So forty seven is ma messed up. Okay, so see this one. Yeah, you see? Like i it's hard to see it. I'm not fucking crazy right now. Um like, you see these three dots? It's like three spaces. So I need to replace that by this tab, this little arrow. Um it's not uh it's not uh catching my my tab for some reason. Okay, so A A T is not defined. Perfect. This is good. Um how the heck not? Where? Name A A T is not defined. What the? Is it is it not that? Oh, maybe here. Yeah, okay. Wait. This should be A. Okay, so that might have messed up the whole thing. Uh let's see. Okay. How is this the expected output? Okay, U S V. How? Like I don't get it. Okay, I need to give a tuple. Yeah. That's a tuple. Okay, this is this test and this. But why I have two over there? Am I printing something? Uh A lambda, this is good. This is a A. Same thing here. This is my lambda zero zero zero. This minus that. A lambda is this this divided by that, get the multiple. Okay, but why I am I returning just that? Yeah, well, it's expected that I have these four. Um okay, wait. Let's print all of them. Yuck. See what we got? Oh my god, jeez. That's kinda annoying a bit, like if I have to copy paste all of it. One two three four. Per one two three four, okay. The answer should be one two three four. Oh, wait 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 wait. No, no, I don't think this is what I I should be returning. Um I think I'm missing a step. Oh yeah, I have to actually I have to actually do this stuff. Oh my god. Okay, yeah. Okay, we're 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 getting there. We're absolutely getting there. Um so I actually have to do um what I'm supposed to do here. And then this is np dot uh V T to get to um whoops. Okay, wait. Okay, whatever. I don't think it matters too much. So have to go np dot uh U S. Hi Nanda, how are you? What time is it for uh everybody watching right now? This is my uh No, I don't think wait wait. I don't think it's right. But how is No, 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 wait wait. There's something wrong here. How is this making any sense? Okay, I'm outputting all that stuff. U S V and then the print result. That's what they're this is their test case? The result is this. Uh which I think is just to check if like I didn't mess up anything. Yeah, because uh I should get back A theoretically, right? Um uh let's make U S dot uh V T. Dear god. Okay, what's the last thing? We got one two three four? Uh which I think is good. Okay, cool. So I think I think we got it. It's just not under the right format for that thing. What is? Okay, a tuple. Um okay, let's re let's remove all this. Have one two three four and here uh okay, I think I got this stuff right. Is this what they want? They just want that? Expected we got two, yes. Yeah, literally have no clue what the heck they want me to output. What the heck is this? Why is it because I transpose the do I? Okay, yeah. I think I I need to not transpose the V because uh in this c in this project plus setup, there's think just the V. Well, I don't know. Like did they want the V uh not transposed? Okay, can do that. B equal V T and P dot transpose. That's that's what you want? Is it? Uh and if I don't print that, do I get like a good answer or? Oh wait, here they're they're doing a tag on oh, okay, 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 wait wait. Uh No, I I I don't understand what they want here. This this? This is their S in their um Okay, starting to take shape, but like what the fuck? They want which one? V T? Okay. We got it. How long was this? How long was this one, man? This I felt I feel what what time is it? It's eleven. I think I spent an hour on this whole mess. Um Yeah, so like uh the last thing I did here, they didn't actually wanted me to diagonalize the matrix uh uh manually here like I did. They wanted me to just send out the squared eigenvalue, which I did uh by doing that. And um they they're saying here they want the the V, but actually they want the V transpose, not the V. Uh so I didn't choose that then. I got the whole thing. Um I can clean it up a bit. But uh this these are two are equal, so these two are equivalent. This is the not diagonalized version. Right? And then we have that. And then we have the U's. And then we have the this. And just put um the proper formulation uh which is here. It was not too bad. I was just very confused. Do transpose. I was just pretty confused about um yeah, I I was just like pretty confused about like the 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 orders of things. Um but then I got it. Like uh this is fairly easy if you uh take a look at it. You just need one of these. You don't need both because they get the same eigenvalue anyway. Once you have the eigenvalues by just getting the roots. And how I get the roots is just like uh this way, right? So um on this part, you just have to short you don't have to do like uh you don't don't have to do all this mess. You can just stop here, right? You get the you get the root of these and you can get them by using uh and NumPy roots, right? And it will it will do it. You get them. These are now your eigenvalues. So you're very happy with them. With them, you're able to calculate the single value matrix, so the S one. So that one, you're able to calculate it and it's a diagonal matrix. So y you already have these because it's the square root of um your um their roots effectively. You got that. You can either diagonalize it yourself or just do np dot tag or like just get the get the uh the array. And then for the U, you just need to get the eigenvectors that are normalized, right? So U U is just the eigenvector uh normalized for the uh eigenvalue with the for the matrix A A T. And that's that, like that part. You're gonna get this one with one eigenvalue, this one with another eigenvalues. And how we got that is this is just like the making the diagonal uh matrix lambda. Actually, I don't have to do that. I could have do np dot tag and put my lambdas in there. Um I do then uh A minus the lambda i, right? Uh and then with that, I can get my multiple because we're doing the simple the simple version of it, right? Uh here it is. It uh this simple version. You're gonna get always a one and then you're gonna get the ratio. And with this ratio in in this one, you just need to normalize it afterward like this with the scaling factor and it could make use of the Pythagorean uh theorem here. Um so with this quantity divided by the vector, you're gonna get the normalized one uh with the uh the unit length. Um so that's what we get here. We re return the normalized vectors. And then we just need to run that for uh the first eigenvalue and the second eigenvalue. Actually, this is confusing because both of them are flipped. Yeah, this is good, this is good. Uh that's that. We you construct your your U um a matrix. So this one this is U one, U two. U one, U two. And uh the only thing that's left is U one. I think in U one, you can actually do the same process that you've done for um add the other matrix, but it doesn't matter. I think is 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 this true? I think so. Uh U containing the vector of A A T, V containing the vector of A T A. So technically, you for the V, you could do the same, right? You could do the same, but instead of using that, you use the other one. And once you have the other one, um it just work. But like since you have three of the four unknown matrix, you can also do it like this and it will work. Um yeah, so we're we're pretty good. Yeah, man. Okay. I got it. I'll I'll put a yellow here. Um because dear god this uh was a trip. Uh but we finally it did. I should have gone uh through the uh blog post by hand first and then uh try to code it. Whew! Okay, that was good. I think we only have one left to do uh for tonight. Uh convert the vector to a diagonal matrix. Um write a pack Python function to convert a one D NumPy into a okay, this one is like lovely, easy. Is it any size? Okay, should not be should not be too hard. I say that and it will take me like three hours. Um okay, let's see. So what do we have? We have uh X of variable length, right? So we have X that has uh a variable length here. We don't know. It's like N in size like that. Um right? And then what do we want? We want um oh, yeah, sorry. Uh for those that don't know, the so this is just like a w um a strategy I um I had um that I developed when I was in university. And it's just a way to like um better uh for me better learn like a a topic that require exercise. So topic that require exercise like there's a lo a lot of the math stuff goes into that bucket. Programming also, if like it's a lot of uh algorithmic thing that you need to 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 work. And how it work is that if you got it first try, you have a green, right? Green means that don't do this thing ever again. That's kinda roughly what it means. Um if you got it first try, let's say let's say you're you're you have a um a a math book, right? Let's say this one, like a so you're you're studying like mathematics for machine learning and then there's a bunch of exercises in there. There's like uh four hundred of them, right? The idea is that in order to understand the the material in a in a uh mechanistic uh uh um mechanistic topic like mathematics or like programming, you should do as much exercise as possible. Yes, you need to know the theory, but like you should do as much exercise as possible because that's kinda how you get the the gist of like the material. If the first time you open an exercise, you get it first try, you should not do it again because as you go through the material, you will you will just like learn more about it, right? So there should be no way that you're gonna be poor at it than you were with no no prior knowledge of the material, right? And in this type of like study study technique, you should always like jump as fast as possible at the exercise. Don't spend too much time on the theory. Because then you can weed out a lot of the exercise. So let's say in this case, I weeded out like all of these ones. But these ones, I got a yellow. A yellow mean I kinda got it, but it took me like a lot of back and forth, right? Like I was like like you you saw it right now. I struggled for my life here for a while. I I got it. At the end of the day, like I understand all of the the elements. It's just that it means that at the first try, there's something a bit deeper that I'm not may not like understand fully, right? In my case, the part that I'm not understanding fully is like why the U, the S and the V have this form right now? And like throughout the whole problem set, it kinda was hindering me because I was like I was kinda lost with like why U is Because I was like I was kinda lost with like why U is like this, why V is like that. I'm sure that if I was looking at the proof and I was going like line by line, I would get it, right? And then this will be easy because I will just like apply the 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 formula. But in this particular case, I was I was struggling. I got it at the end of the day, so that was fine. But it means that as I'm gonna go through the exercise, I should try this one again at least like two times in order to um uh like understand the flow. And while the next time I'm gonna do this exercise, I'm gonna look at this and I'm gonna be like, okay, let me read this stuff again, right? I'm gonna read this stuff again, find maybe another uh uh proof, another way or like our video that explain the stuff. I'm gonna ingest the theory and then I'm gonna try it out, right? If I still haven't I'm having trouble, I can I can like um reduce the the zone of unknown of where I'm not comfortable, right? At some point usually usually here after like three try, if you have a yellow at first, you should be good to go. A red mean I have no fucking clue what's going on. I like zero clue. Like I looked at the answer at the end and I didn't know what's up. I didn't know like what was going on. If this is the case, right, the first try, you're you're doing your best, right? And then you're 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 hitting this roadblock. What he means is that you should like this is the type of problem you should do multiple time, right? So effectively what you're doing is that you're the first uh go at all of the problems that you're doing. You're gonna weed out a lot of the the problem. So you're gonna weed out a lot all of the greens that should not even take a look at anymore. The only thing that you're gonna do is like a bunch of yellows and a bunch of red. It's not very nice for ego because you're always gonna be doing the thing that you're struggling the most. But learning wise, this is best, because like you're gonna struggle, struggle. And then you're gonna slowly turn these ones into green, and then you're like, oh, I'm an idiot. I didn't know about this, but it was explained in this chapter and whatever. So this one will be green. And every every pass through all the exercise you do, the first one, you might have like four hundred to do. And then the second pass through, you might have like a hundred and fifty. And then the third pass through, you have like the trickiest twenties on in the whole book that you need to do. And then you do it uh again and again. Um and I like to do it in like, I don't know, chapter blocks. So if I'm doing a chapter, I'm gonna go through all the exercise in the chapter. And then like like weed out a few and then do it again and again until like the whole chapter is is unlocked, right? If the whole chapter is green at some point, I don't really need to take a look at it again, right? Um it helped me wait the um amount of time I need to spend on on the stuff, right? Uh because you don't have an infinite amount of time. Like I cannot uh spend, let's say, three hours doing these easy ones. I should spend like three hours doing one that I'm really struggling with. I will learn much more than doing that. So that's the that's the green, yellow, red uh method in nutshell. I have a video actually about that that explain like the kinda the neu neuroscience theory about it a bit. Um but it wa it was mostly developed to practice. Uh let me pull up the video actually um. Was it this one? Yeah, I think it's this one. Yeah, it's this one. So you can check here for the full explanation. Um yeah, eh I uh I I use this mainly for math stuff, right? Uh but also anything that has a lot of exercise. There's a lot of uh 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 topic, especially in engineering, let's say physics, right? Physics is a good example. You could you 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 could just run through the whole thing and like have a very high focus um on exercise and like you're gonna get it. Like whether you like it or not, you're gonna get the information. Um and you will just focus your mind into avoiding the trap of like doing a review for an exam or something like that. And then you spend like ninety five percent of your time going through the greens. Um yeah. So why do you need to memorize how to calculate the correlation matrix, why is not enough to understand how it's applied and where and just move on? Oh, that's a very good question. Like this is honestly like a um uh a pretty pretty nice question. Um so like there's two way of of going about it, right? There's um uh and both are viable, like they're like it and it's not it's not um I'd say it like a a a a binary choice, right? You can either go about the stuff that you learn in a very high level, which is just purely theoretical. Okay, you understand the theory and then you're good and then like uh that's it. Um what I found, when you're doing just this, and let's say you're doing no exercise uh ever, and then you're just like learning. And then you you like click in your mind, you're like, yeah, understand that. I understand what the correlation matrix. I can explain it, right? Um but you're not able to kinda go through the proof and then like like uh 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 develop it and say like, yeah, this is exactly why it's it's doing this stuff. If you're going this way and just being high level all the time, it's gonna be good. But you're gonna lack something a bit deeper, which is like the intuition about the thing. And the inner mechanism mechanism about why things is the way it is, right? Um this inner mechanism thing is very useful when you need to kinda think creatively about technical topic and mix match some of the stuff. Um if you go the other way, right? The the way where you're gonna develop everything from scratch at a very, very micro level, you're gonna you're gonna know the stuff very well, right? You're gonna know the stuff very well. But you're gonna spend a lot and a lot of um energy. It it takes a lot of energy, let's say, to figure out the correlation matrix, how to do like the stuff uh uh manually. Or like figure out singular value decomposition, how to 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 run the stuff uh manually and how the algorithm work. Um you're gonna spend a lot of energy and a lot of time. So you're gonna um have way much breadth than the guy that will just look at everything high level, right? The guy might know everything in the the field at a very high level. And this other guy might know like very specific things about like um uh specific topic, but very deeply, right? Both of them, in my view, are wrong. Like bo like if you go one way or the other, it's gonna be wrong both way. What you should strive for, and this is like the balance I found that was the most practical use practically useful um is being able to quickly get the grasp of the high level quickly, right? And being okay with having level of abstraction that you don't understand. So let's say, let's say you're using GPUs for uh your your stuff and you have no clue how the GPU work. But you're at the PyTorch level, so you're just using the GPUs, right? You should be fine. Like there's there's no the there there's in most of the cases, you're all good, right? However, some of the folks will go and take a a deeper dive into listed GPU and realize something fundamental that you may have missed, right? And this is fine, because these guys will will be uh will be figuring it out. Or like if you you're starting to work on a project and like the you need to have more parallelization and whatnot. And you realize that like this GPU thing that you've put into this little capsule, you don't really know about it deeply. Uh it might be worth your while to understand like, yeah, this like if I'm gonna spend more time with Triton and with CUDA and then implement my algorithm a bit more uh 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 smartly by understand the architecture of the GPU, then I'll be able to gain like fifty percent speed up in training of my uh neural network and whatnot. Uh and then you study this deeply and you're able to implement the algorithm deeply, and then you're able to do the stuff like deeply. You take this deep understanding and you can um uh bring it up, right? Um I say that because I was doing research, right? And I was doing research and I'm still doing research. Um but research is a very tricky thing, because uh in any fields you're going, it's infinite. They're like and a lot of people get really messed up by that. Um because you go into a field and there is there is no artificial boundary like when you're studying, let's say, like a this book. This book, the chapter end, and then like you know, you don't need to know more stuff. Everything is in this book that you need to know. Let's say it was in your exam or whatever it is. Um in in a research setting, you you could get lost forever into a tangent, right? So what happened usually is that you need to be able to have a high level overview about what's going on. Because sometimes the stuff from another field will be very useful, right? And sometimes, let's say, so uh the stuff from like what your colleagues are doing or like what the what your field is doing right now or in the past is useful. You literally cannot learn everything at a deep level all the time. Like when I when I review a paper, um like there was a good paper that I I reviewed, like a DeepSeek R one. It took me a full week to kinda like dive deep into it, right? And then it took me another week to dive deep into G R P O. Um and then the K L divergence Y was uh applied the way it was applied, right? Three weeks of my life I spent like learn and it was fun. Like I I don't regret any time I was doing that. But like I have a deeper understanding of some of the uh uh of the stuff, but nowhere near what the researcher uh at DeepSeek were 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 doing. Um so all this to say that like you bring this deep knowledge back, right? And then you apply it to a direction, and then you then you're gonna discover something useful, right? So it has this like broad overview thing and then it's like deep um type of uh deep type. In my particular research, I was doing like um I was trying to predict in various ways internal states. Uh let's say consciousness, pain, emotions. And um I borrowed a lot from graph theory, right? And I borrowed a lot from um uh uh um uh uh entropy type of literature and complexity type of literature. It was not directly related to my field, right? But I've seen that like uh the way uh the the problem was set up. If I had a graph and I was looking at it like this, I could have more features. So I explored that thing for like a month or two months, and then I brought some of the feature back with me. I tried it out and it worked, right? And then like there was a whole series of papers we're able to publish uh and push it further, and my colleagues pushed it even further than me. Um because uh we were able to have this broader overview, like go deep into one thing and then incorporate into our stuff, and then we were able to like get the better result. Um yeah, the you have to yeah, you have to have a certain kind of intuition. And it's it's hard to describe like uh the kind of intuition that we're talking about. Because it's both an intuition with like a a a good breadth of ideas, right? You need to know about other field like uh if you were to look at every research ever like uh uh realize, you will realize that there's a lot of things that are overlapping. Like some stuff, uh what was it? It was the um there the i i it's it's very apparent in some of the um uh uh like um some of the metric, they have three names, because it's in three different fields. It's the same shit in all of these fields, right? It just have three names from three researcher in three different decades that discovered the same stuff. So if you look at research in the whole, there's a lot of overlaps everywhere, right? And there's a lot of stuff that you can maybe borrow um that are applicable because some of the stuff that you're using right now with another name is applicable directly um over there. Um so you were extracting feature from the connectivity hidden state of a model or not quite. It was not exactly the model, it was the brain. So I was studying like um uh unconscious uh well uh minimally conscious and like vegetative state people or unresponsive wakefulness syndrome people. And um I was looking at the brain of these folks as a graph. And then I was using like some graph theory uh technique to can describe that uh brain. So I was able to get a lot of features. And what I was doing effectively is I was training a model to predict consciousness. And we had different um timestamp where we could see if like this brain could support consciousness or not. And based on the feature, I was then looking at let's say the performance of the model, but also which of the feature the model was looking at the most, right? And with this, I could then bring it back to the actual brain and explain some of the uh of the the structural uh problem or uh so structural setup of this consciousness uh scaffolding, right? So that's kinda it. I was doing both ways. I was going from the brain to the to the model and the model to the to the brain. Um at the end of the the day, I uh one of my colleague Charlotte was able to uh create like a um uh kinda complexity metric that summarized if this brain uh how much it could support consciousness, roughly speaking. Um so like uh but all of this was using uh very, very different things. It was using like a uh what the field of consciousness neuroscience was doing. But also like all the other field what they were were doing. There was some part that we were um boring from like the sleep people, which is very close to consciousness, but like it's not exactly the same thing. So sleep people, we we borrowed that. At one point, we were also like looking at different metric that we could use to like create the graph. And uh we realized something very weird is that um like during the signal processing, a lot of the researchers were either looking only at the phase um in the functional connectivity in the in between the different nodes in the brain or the amplitude. You could do like a a f uh phase lag index, so it's a me a measure of functional connectivity with the phase or um amplitude envelope correlation, right? But in both cases, you take the signal and you either just keep the phase or you just keep the uh the amplitude. But it's the same, it came from the same signal. And then there there's different lab that was only doing like uh amplitude double correlation. It other lab that was only do you using like a a phase lag index. So what we thought was like, hey, why not combine the two? Because we can calculate it like and we can like map them and combine two in like a kind of a graph, but with both type of information in each of the nodes. And then train it on the on the and uh train a machine learning model. And the machine learning model will tell us like which one of these feature is more important. And what we realized is that some of the feature were more important for some specific state of consciousness. We had like various state um when we had like a uh healthy people going anesth on anesthesia. Um so we're able to like uh check this out and like some of the state were more predictive of uh other stuff. But there was absolutely no reason why I would have done that, right? If you we were just looking at the literature, you either choose one or the other. But when you understand a bit deep deeper, like why are they choosing like amplitude double correlation? The reason why is that in their lab, the code was set up for uh amplitude double correlation. And another lab, it was set up for phase lag index. So it was like, I'll set up both, I'll use both. And by using both, you can get like more information and uh more uh ideas. But research is a lot of this. Research is um uh is a lot of uh uh breadth information. And then like going to depth into specific topics and then bring it back into the whole um um in the whole uh in whole flow. Um and like that's also uh another thing with um just uh having breadth, right? Is if you have only breadth, you don't really know like what's possible. Okay, like you're not at the I'd say at atom level where you see things as they really are, right? Uh actually, I I have this blog post by Shulman uh uh from OpenAI. Um I can actually show it here. This is a very good example. So this dude, right? He co-founded OpenAI, right? And then he was at Entropic, and now like I think he has another lab that he like set up, co-founded Thinking Lab. They got millions of dollars of uh e effectively, the guy is doing research after research. There is a very in interesting um a blog post here, right? This blog post about K L divergence, which was used in G R P O and it's it's used in like different uh type of uh uh context in machine learning, especially when you have reinforcement learning. It shows you what I'm talking about in term of research and uh being uh able to go deep into um uh a specific uh uh element of something much deeper. K L divergence on its own is just like um a statistical um topic. It has no it is no real interest. It's like the um um a m a metric to calculate how much different, right, two distributions are, right? That's kinda all there is. But there's many way you can calculate it, right? And uh one way that is biased, you you can see it in the P P O algorithm. Another way that this guy prefer, which is this one, has like some uh different property. And another way that the G R P O folks uh like has a another different completely property. And it's the third version, it's the key tree here um that look like this, right? Yeah, like it has different property and it was constructed in a specific ways, right? There's choices that you can make uh like this at the atomic level that will change how um uh the things that you're building on top behave. And especially in machine learning and deep learning, it does have a big impact. Uh but you have to go deep enough uh at um at the atomic level in specific areas. Uh not everywhere all the time, but in specific areas, if you go there, uh you're gonna see these things. And like another good example is uh uh Doctor Tridao uh with the uh flash attention paper. Um like uh there are the technique from grad school signal processing that give you metric, that function of Um like uh there are the technique from grad school in the person that give you metric that function of both phase and amplitude, right? Uh. Yes, there's there's many of them, right? There's there's a whole slew of them that you can uh select. The good thing with like um phase lag index and amplitude envelope correlation that uh we're we 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 use is that. There was already a lot of literature about their connection to consciousness, right? In a specific phase of the EEG signal, um yeah, exactly, yeah. So innovate, you make stuff up. At some point, we're doing like uh entropy uh based uh metric, it was difficult to calculate. But uh I've learned how to uh paralyze it in the high performance computing environment and we're able to uh to calculate that. Uh but uh back to this, like the flash attention is a not a good example. Because like uh i- if you if you uh think about like the the um self attention matrix. In a in a transformer, um like it's a N by N and it's quadratic in term of um. Uh in term of uh uh complexity, right? It's quadratic, so a lot of people were focused on that and they were trying to find ways of kinda linearize linearizing attention. But what this guy and other people found is that when you actually time it, right? When you time where the attention is is being um I'd say wasted, not sorry. Where where the computation is being wasted in attention calculation, it's it's not even that much on the. Uh on the the actual calculation, it's on the memory um uh read and write. So this is where a lot of the things were were completely wasted. So what he taught was uh well, instead of trying to find a new theoretical uh attention mechanism. Why not just write to um to the uh uh. To the uh how to uh to uh just use the GPU better effectively, right? So that's how they they did, like they just used the GPU better and it led to massive improvement. Up to the point that like they could have context length, uh it's over here. Um they could have context length of uh sorry. We're over there, I think, no, it's there, yeah, here. They could have context length that is those much uh much longer. So they could increase the context length by four and still get the speed up compared to the vanilla version of um uh attention, right? So but they didn't do anything else, they didn't try to reinvent attention to remove the quadratic bottleneck. They literally just improved how the GPU was utilized and they did two things, right? They did like a better tiling technique and they did like re-computation instead of like storing the the matrix. Because they saw they saw it was faster. Um and this thing, this little thing, this little improvement, when you you bring it to a scale of OpenAI or like Entropic. It lead to massive improvement, so a lot of the model right now are using flat attention V two, the ver- second version of this. Um but this is a good example, it's not the big lab, like it's not the uh a hundred people that developed this thing. Um it's mainly this guy and he there's a video of him like explaining how he came up with this. And it's a lot of like, well, I read about all of these paper that says like like uh the attention is quadratic and we're wasting time. But this guy timed some of the stuff and I did also the experiment and I timed it. And I was like, how about we just do it a bit better? So he was learning um CUDA and he actually implemented some of this and he was like, wow, it's actually faster. So then he did some more improvement, he was like, yeah, this is this is getting more and more faster. Um so then like the breakthrough of flash attention, the flash attention V two was gained. Um but in both of these cases, it was the breadth information, right? The understanding the theory and and being okay with not knowing everything on every little details for like all of the the field. But realizing where there's a game to be made and then you should go deep. And then you went deep there, you went out, published something very impactful, realized there was more juice, you went back in, you back out. And now like uh uh we were able to have kind of an explosion of the context length without changing the attention mechanism, which was awesome. Um yeah, mix of theoretical and practical mindset will always prevail. Um that's the best researcher I've uh I've known were like this, they were okay with not knowing everything, right? They knew a lot of the stuff at surface level and then you went to to actually kinda get a um. They kinda get the intuition of where to dig deep, so sometime they spend like a month in like one specific area and then diving very, very deep into it. Um and then when they come out, they come out with like fantastic ideas and then they can mix and match them um pretty well. So that's it, folks, I think uh this is it for me for tonight, it's uh quite late. Um don't hesitate, if you have any question, um ping me. Um like uh if people are interested in in deep learning in general. I usually uh recommend not doing what I just did and trying to learn linear algebra and like doing like the this uh these stuff. Try a bit, uh start a bit more higher level and then dive deeper uh afterward. And at some point, when you like you have a lot of confidence about like uh what is deep learning and machine learning in general and how to use it for your own purposes. Then I suggest getting like a some uh material, there's a lot of books, I like this one, I like the Mathematic for Machine Learning, right? I like this uh this one, it's a it's a good kinda handbook type of thing. Uh get something like this, get your base strong and then go back to doing like a productive stuff afterward. Uh it's the best way to learn um how I find it. So have a good day, good night, everybody. Cool, well, you can tune in uh next, I'm gonna do another one uh next week. Um but uh other than that, you can hop into the Discord server, I think I have a link into this description. Um you can we can chat over there also, see everyone.